Okay, so tonight are we're the presentation is understanding how school boards function. So this is our mission and our vision of First State Educate. So our mission is to empower Delawareans to engage in local level decision making. That's a really important thing is local level decision making. And how it directly impacts school governance, mobilizing the community and driving improvements for student outcomes. So that's our mission at First State Educate. And then our vision is that Delaware have a Delaware where citizens are actively shaping school governance, driving data informed decisions that ensure that all students have access to an education that prepares them for a productive fulfilling life. So in short, we want students to be able to achieve their fullest potential. Okay, we're going to go to the next slide. Okay, so session purposes, and this is something we do at all of our meetings. So just what we're about and why we have these sessions at First State Educate is we're just really trying to create a space where we can have collaboration. We want collaboration between the community and the school boards, obviously with our school districts. And we want to make sure that there is a there's transparency. So we promote transparency and listening to diverse perspectives because that's really important. It can't be about what I think or what Terry thinks. It's about what everybody has to bring to the table. So we really promote that. Encouraging joint exploration of solutions so that we are looking at different solutions to how our public school system is working. Of course, fostering partnerships, that's very important coalition partners working together is extremely important to enhance school governance and again to improve student outcomes. And lastly, we want to have an open dialogue with our community on important topics like what's happening in our schools and you know, our school climates. And when I say school climate, I mean the culture in the school and how school boards can contribute to those insights. So we're going to go to the next slide. Terry, do you want me to just move forward or do you want to do this?
I'm fine. All right, so this slide, thank you guys for joining us. What is your level, what would you say your level of understanding is on the role of the School Board of Education, on the role of a elected member in the body as a whole? Would you say that it's novice, like this is something that's new to you, maybe you know a little bit, but not too much? Moderate? Are you an expert?
I don't see anyone. Everyone's very shy.
You don't have to be shy in the chat. Rounded? So kind of got a little bit of an understanding, but all right, somewhat familiar. All right, great. All right. All right, great. Can we go to the next slide? All right, so the session overview, given your level of understanding of school boards, what we plan to show, share with you tonight is we're going to learn about the roles and responsibilities of the school board in the role of public education. We're going to obtain knowledge about best practices for school board, gain some insight into how the community and families can participate. So that's really important. Yvonne had mentioned that earlier, you know, diversity and thought participation. It's not about what like, you know, her or I, or even the school board thinks, but it really has to be, you know, communities, community decisions. So we really want to help you understand how that, what that might look like and how that can take shape. By the end of this, you should acquire knowledge on how the school board operates. So a school board is responsible for multiple different areas of running of a school district. So you'll get some insight on that. You'll also become familiar with why local governance is important in public schools. Many people don't realize that our school boards are one of the most powerful bodies in the school district, you know, responsible for the decision making. You'll also understand how individuals become elected school board members and what that process might look like. Hey, Bruna? Okay. So just some definitions here, we have governance. Governance really refers to the oversight and planning of a district. So it's the body coming together to make decisions for operational practices, how the district's going to move forward, what that oversight will look like in terms of accountability, meeting specific goals and metrics, and planning for the operational aspect of the district for any given year. The management is the day to day operations of the district. So there are a lot of different people that are involved in the management of the district and all involved with reporting back to the school board. But there are various levels of management within a district. And that's everything could be from building facilities to management of how things are operating within our schools, how policies are being implemented and carried out, to recently decisions that are made, just like with the weather that we've had, implement weather, how those decisions are made. You know, we all sit on pins and needles waiting for the superintendent to make the call and everyone always wants to know how, when, and why those decisions are made. So maybe I learned a little bit about that today as well.
I love that example, Terry. Okay, so what is the most important role of the school board? So you can just put this, oh, we actually have a poll. Thank you, Bruna. So these are the choices. What is the most important role of a school board? Is a policy creation? Is it budget oversight? Is it evaluating the superintendent? Is it student outcomes? Or is it all of the above? Okay, all of the above is a good answer. So all of those things are very important when it comes to what the role if a school board member is. We can go to the next slide. So here we're going to talk about the roles and responsibilities of a school board of education. So we all talk about our school boards are local bodies, they're local education agencies. Every school district and every charter, public charter school has their own board of directors. That's it's a school board. And the difference is with a charter school, they're appointed, maybe some are elected by each other. But the local school districts in a, in a traditional public school district, they are elected by the community. And one of the most important things that they do as a governing role, like Terry mentioned, governing is making policies. So they develop and adopt policies having to do with a plethora of things, whether it's about curriculum, student discipline, safety, how to hire staff. And anything that is a policy has to be approved by the school board. And sometimes you might go to a school, to a school board meeting and they'll have a first read or a second read. And what that is, is the school, when they're changing a policy or adopting a new policy, the community gets to have input. Actually, every school district should have a policy committee that includes the community. But even if they don't, the public still has a say. You can, there's a variety of ways that you can have input into public, into the policy of a school board. But it has to have more than one read, which means at the school board meeting, which is a meeting held in public, they have to read it, tell the community at the school board meeting, and then the next month is when they have their second read and they usually vote on it. So it is a collaboration like we talked about earlier, where we're getting different perspectives. And of course, budget oversight. I mean, these school districts have millions of dollars of budgets and the school board oversees that they approve an annual budget and they decide how they have to vote on how funds are distributed, whether it's for programs and initiatives or it's for infrastructure investments. One of the most important roles that a school board member does is hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent. And just like you and your job, you want to have an evaluation annually because you want to know how you're doing. Well, that's the same thing. The school board should be evaluating the superintendent on an annual basis and letting them know how they're doing with their goals and reaching a strategic plan, which they should have. Speaking of strategic plan, another thing that the school board is involved in, creating and implementing a strategic plan. Many school districts have three year strategic plans, others have five year. There's not a set decision because it depends upon what your goals are. So if you have a goal that in your school district that might, you think takes five years, then you would want to have a five year plan. But the strategic plan of a school district is like the blueprint of the school district. And it's really important to have that. And it's up to the school board to work with the superintendent and the public and the staff to come up with what's going to go in that strategic plan. So it's again, a collaboration where you're getting input from the community, input from staff, input from anyone that in the community that wants to set, talk about how the school district should be functioning. Community engagement. It is very important for the school district to be interacting with families in the community. That's what public comment is for, for the community or the, or families to come to the school board meeting or to go on Zoom and make public comment and talk about issues that they might be concerned about, or there's many things that you can talk about. Each school district has a different policy, but most give two or three minutes for the public to speak. You need to be prepared. But it's very important for the school board member to engage the community because you should be embracing the community because you, you should be proactive instead of reactive. Because when you, let's say, have to go to a referendum or you need a community member or parents to support things, you don't want to wait till then. So you should always build that relationship with the community. And then of course, it's up to the school district to evaluate data to see what the effectiveness of the school programs are, is the curriculum working or what, where are our kids in their literacy rates and their numeracy rates, right? That's student outcomes. Because everything that you do as a school board member, at the end of the day, should be about improving student outcomes. We can go to the next slide. So school board best practices. You have, as a school board member, you have to have high expectations for all students, right? And you should have high expectations of a quality instruction. So you want to also have high expectations of your educators. As we all know, in Delaware, we have an educate, we have a teacher shortage, right? That's a symptom of a larger problem. Why is that happening, right? And that's something school boards are facing. If there was one issue that really rises to the top right now, it's the teacher shortage. Since COVID, that's, that's a big thing. But you have to have a commitment to have high expectations of the people around you. You should have high expectations of your superintendent and of your, of the staff and of course, of students because you want them to be able to reach their full potential. Any policies that you make should be accountability driven. So there should be whatever there is in a policy that you're adopting, there should be accountability attached to that. Very important is school boards are not focused on operations. That's the superintendent's job. School boards are focused on governing. So like Terry mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, governing versus managing. School boards governing, superintendent is managing. So every employee in the school district is, is reports to ultimately the superintendent. You are accountable as a school board member to the community. It's important as a school board member to be data save savvy and learn how to collaborate. Collaboration is a very important thing. It can't be me, 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 it's what I want. It has to be about everybody working together. And sometimes that requires compromise. I'm sure, you know, if you're paying attention to what's going on in our state, we have some school boards that go at each other, they're arguing, their meetings go till two, three in the morning. This is not the norm. The norm is to have a meeting for an hour or two, once a month. You collaborate, you make decisions together, and you're always thinking about how that's going to improve student achievement. And you can't do that unless you understand how to read data. And you should be leaders, you should be working to lead with your, your, the school chief, superintendent as a team. Everybody should be working as a team. It shouldn't be two versus five. I'm not saying everybody should vote for everything unanimously. What I'm saying is that you have to work together and lead together. You can't just work in vacuums. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to you, Terry.
Thank you very much. All right, so Yvonne gave some really good examples of, okay, third question, there's a poll, some really good examples of different things that school boards are responsible for in terms of roles and responsibilities. So hearing all that, how can the community participate with their local school board? Yep, 100% all of the above, yes, excellent. So here are the ways that you can participate. So as Yvonne mentioned earlier, public comment, community members can participate in the roles and responsibilities or the decision making, I should say, of school board members by showing up to the meetings and giving public comments, sharing their thoughts and their opinions on whatever decisions are being made, being made, whatever the school board is discussing. There's also the option of emailing and calling. I know that I frequently reach out to my school board members of my local district. You know, my daughter's 24 now, but particularly when she was in school, I did have a very visible presence in the district at the time and, you know, made sure that I made friends with, you know, my school board members so that they knew who I was as a parent. Their information is always available on the website if you ever needed to look that up and wanted to call, showing up at those school board meetings. Of course, you have the option to now attend school board meetings in person. You can attend virtually and you can also sign up to give public comment, even in a virtual setting. So those are just some examples of different ways that the community can engage the local school board. And that's it. All right, so on this, your community, family partnership with, excuse me, participation with the board, building relationships with the board, it's important to participate in the decision making, making public comment as part of that, and then also holding school board members accountable. And why do we want to do that? I think that based on everything that we've heard here so far tonight and what we've talked about, the roles and responsibilities of school board member are really big. You know, the school board member has a lot of power. And with that power, you know, it's, we as community members have to make sure that we're holding them accountable, but making sure that decisions are being made in the best interest of all students. So understanding the, the volume of responsibility the school board has and the power that a school board has, what do we do? What can we do about it to make sure that the decisions that are being made are in the best interest of all students and that our school board members are continually engaging the public and also that they are representing the public that they serve? Any ideas? So again, kind of what we were just talking about, giving school, giving public comment, attending meetings, asking questions, it's important to raise any urgent priorities. So even when you can't attend school board meetings, like I said, you can attend virtually, but you should always be able to go to the website of your school district and look at the agenda and look at the meeting minutes from the previous meeting to be able to see what they discussed and what they talked about. If there's something that is of concern to you, something that you're not sure about, that you want additional information on, you should always have the ability to reach out to one of your local school board members to get additional information and educate yourself on what the district is doing and what's going on within your schools. You can, another way that you can become involved, and I think Yvonne's going to talk a little bit more about this and a little bit in terms of understanding how school board members or how an individual might run for a school board member is understanding where they, where they stand on these positions. So as we're heading into May, you're going to see that's going to be a lot of information online, you know, individuals who are announcing their intent to run for school board. As community members, it's our responsibility to make sure that we understand who those individuals are and what their positions are so that we can ask the questions to make sure that in those roles, they will be serving the mission of the district and they will be representing the best interest of everyone in the district, all the students, to support student success and not just, you know, maybe pushing a personal agenda or just representing certain populations. So, you know, ultimately, your involvement, your level of involvement can be whatever you make it to be. It can be as little or as much as you make it, but you're going to get out of it what you put into it. So whether you're just looking to learn more about a school board or you're ready just to kind of jump in and say, you know what, I think that I want to join the school board and I want to be actually part of that decision making process and I want to have a seat at the table. The first step is showing up and Yvonne will talk a little bit more about that, a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Terry. I'm going to go to the next slide, please. Okay, so by and large, a school board member is a volunteer, a volunteer unpaid. So all that time that they put in, they are not paid, they get no compensation, and they probably have full time jobs on top of it. They might also be a student. They also of course have a family life. So school boards are members, you know, they do a lot and they don't get paid for it. So I think that's an important thing to make sure to mention. School boards are elected two ways. So we have in our state of Delaware, and it can be confusing. So I'm going to say it as slowly as I can. In Newcastle County and one district in, and two districts, I think, no, one, is Milford in Kent, okay, one in Kent and then two, which is Cape. So we have five in Newcastle County school districts. Out of those five, one which is Apo, has at large seats. So basically what that means, they have five school board members and anyone in the district can run for that, those seats. So you could have five people all living on the same street and be on the school board. In the other four districts in Newcastle County, you have to live in a nominating district that is now up for election, right? That's how you run. So for example, Brandywine has three nominating districts up this year for, for election. You have to live in those nominating districts in order to run, but anyone in the district can vote. So the voting is at large, but you have to live in the nominating district in which you represent. And we also have that in Milford and they have a combination of at large and nominating. We have it in Indian River and we have it in Cape Henlopen. But all the other districts in the state are at large. It's an important thing to understand and your nominating district is based on your home address, so it's a geographical district. Obviously, we've already talked about this. School boards are responsible for making decisions that are based on input, not just what they think, but they get input from their school superintendent, from families, from teachers, from the general public, even from students. I was looking the other day on the website, on the different district websites, and it's interesting to see some school districts have a student rep that actually is part of their board, some have no students and some rotate their students. So there's no, there's not a one size fits all answer, but I do love to see a student as part of a school board. These decisions are made about students, so they should be having a voice. And of course, we're then promoting civic education, which is great. Oh, as I mentioned earlier, it's important for school boards members to make decisions not based on feelings or who they like, but based on data, on real data, so that the decisions are, are valid. And you, school boards have a governing function, as I said, not a managing function. And it's separate from the district operations. And what's really important to note here is that, for example, I hear this a lot, I'm going to run for the school board and I'm going to change everything about the district. Well, that is not going to happen. That's, that's, that's not reality. You can run for a school board and serve on the school board so that you can help make those decisions with other people. But you aren't going to go in and change how the school, the district operates because that's up to the superintendent to, to operate the school district. And but the school board does set the goals, like I said, the strategic plan for the district and definitely sets standards and measurable outcomes for the superintendent. And that comes with his, his or her evaluation. That's why it's important to evaluate your superintendent on an annual basis, just like any other job, you want to know how you're doing. Okay, we can go to the next slide, which I believe is a poll. So why is local governance important in public schools? So I just want to know why you think it's important, if you could put something in the chat.
Okay, it serves as not just a governing body, but also structure, you know, in a sense that there's some rules and regulations and policies that we follow and we're not just coming up with ideas and so forth, and we're governed by these rules and regulations.
Great. I love that. Very good. Oh, and Janine seconds that. Okay, great. All right, we're going to go to the next slide, which is you, Terry.
All right. So when we're talking about the importance of local school boards, you know, kind of as we've been talking about this evening, there are several characteristics to stand out with local school boards. So first of all, our school boards represent our communities. They are the voice of public education within our community. So that's really important to understand. They provide citizen governance based on knowledge of the community's resources and their needs. So I think Yvonne alluded a little bit to some differences between districts earlier. You know, the needs in districts in Newcastle will vary from the needs of those in Kent County versus those in Sussex. And it's really important that our elected members of our school board are sensitive to the needs and that they have their thumb on the pulse, so to speak, of the local community when they're setting policy and making decisions. The school boards also set the standard for achievement in school districts, right? So that's really important. We're all working towards student success and we all want our districts to be the best and we want to set that by, that bar high, not just for our students, but for the educators and the employees that work in the district and how they interface and interact within the community. So incorporating the community's view into that in terms of what students should know and what they should be able to accomplish at each grade level is really important. So, you know, if those of you have been around, depending again on your level of involvement over the last several years, you may remember, we have had changes to our curriculum and to our standards here in the state of Delaware when we adopted the Common Core State Standards. And there was a lot of, you know, community and family engagement in that. And not only, but even though those standards were adopted at the state level, the school boards then had to make changes within the districts to identify curriculum that would be best to meet those standards. And so there was a lot of family and parent engagement there, getting the parent voice to find out collaboratively what would be the best for students and how they would get there to meet those standards across all grade levels. More recently, we saw there was legislation that passed with House Bill 198 incorporating Black history into our curriculum. So all of our school districts had to go back and realign the curriculum to make sure that they were compliant with the law. And that was a public process that involved a lot of public and community input. So that was important. Another key factor of school boards is that they have to be accessible to everybody in the community and accountable to, for their performance. So like I had mentioned early, earlier, you should be able to go onto the district website and find the contact name and information for any elected member of a school board and you should be able to reach out to them. They have to be accountable for the, the decisions that they make. And that accountability comes in the form of community members engaging them, showing up to the meetings, asking questions. You know, when there's a strategic plan in place and, you know, we have, as community members have access to look at that, that information's on the website, we can show up at a school board meeting or reach out to our school board members and say, hey, I see that part of the strategic plan was to develop initiatives to help increase in a literacy proficiency. I haven't noticed any changes in my child's school. Could you tell me a little bit more around what the district is doing to help increase those literacy rates? That's a form of accountability, asking questions. School boards are elected by the community. They are elected to work diligently and to provide opportunities for students to receive high quality education. So again, we do see a lot of differences between districts in terms of different programming and supports and services that are offered and that difference, you know, like I said, it can differ between districts, but it is the school board's responsibility to work with the community to make sure that they are providing the best, highest quality level of instruction for students. And I think all districts want that because they want to encourage people to come to their schools, they want to be able to recruit the high quality teachers. And in order to do that, we have to, they have to do this, they have to make sure that they're working to provide those opportunities through programming and supports and services. And finally, school boards are the community's education watchdog. So what we mean by that is they ensure that the taxpayers are getting the most other dollars, tax dollars. Yvonne mentioned a referendum earlier, talked a little bit about that. So, you know, when a district goes up for a referendum and they're asking the taxpayers to vote in favor of a tax increase, so your property taxes are going up, it's because you're, the money is going to be used to support specific initiatives within the district. And at that time, the district will share what those initiatives are, what they plan to do with that money and how they plan to use it. But the school board oversees that and they're responsible for making sure that the money that they're being fiscally responsible and that the money that is received from the taxpayer dollars is actually making its way into the schools, into the classrooms and in support of what our students, whatever it is they, they said that they were going to use the money for those. So through policy and governance, they are overseeing that process and making sure that the district is being fiscally responsible. Yvonne, I believe you are.
I'm sorry. No, I think I'm next. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. That was great. Okay, so how does an individual get elected to the school board? As I sort of went through a little bit ago is about the nominating districts, but there's several ways that you can get on a local school board. So obviously you have to run for a local school board. The filing deadline to run this year is March 7th at 4:30 PM. You absolutely cannot file to run after that date. And the election is May 13th, which is the second Tuesday of May, always the same time. And these public elections, obviously, they're not with the general. So you can imagine that turnout is not good. And it's very disturbing because a few people vote and decide on this very important role. That is how a school board member is elected. Now, sometimes it's after March 7th and somebody resigns from the school board or has to step away. So the school board might send out an announcement saying, we have an opening on the school board and they themselves vote for that, decide on that person. But then they have to run. But then they have to run the following year. So that's a good reason why Brandywine has three seats open, Colonial has three seats open, Indian River has four seats open. These, this is because people had to leave the board and the, the board itself elected those people and, but they have to be elected by the community. So they, they run the following year. So the only way to run is to file and you have to do that with the Department of Elections. You must have a criminal background check and a child registry. You go through the child registry. So there's no cost to file per se, but there is a cost for the criminal background check and for the child registry, which is a total of $78. And you also must fill out a paperwork at the Department of Elections and you sort of declare your candidacy. So that's, these are very important things and we have a separate training on how to run for school board, which is what you have to do. So, and that is available on our website at firstaideducate.org. We can go to the next slide. So we're gonna just do a quick activity and Terry and I will facilitate. We can go to the next slide, please. So I want people to participate, so I'm gonna call on you. So let's talk about the scenario. You have regularly a bit attending your school board meetings. You do not see any changes to student outcomes. So each year you've been going for a year after year and student outcomes have either been flat or reduced. You do not hear the school board discussing data or improving any, or any improvement plans or anything to change those student outcomes. And you are considering a run for school board because you feel your voice needs to be at the table. Cause remember, if you don't have a seat at the table, you don't have a voice. Additionally, you see a lot of discord among the school board members. They're arguing, they're not collaborating and there's a general lack of transparency. I promise I'm not describing one particular district. You have tried to share your concerns through email and making public comment. What would be your next steps? So I wanna hear from everybody. Janine, John, and Angela. Come on, who wants to go first?
So I would not, I would not go straight to the superintendent. But, but I would try to, um, you know, bring, what I would do is bring the data. Um, we haven't seen any changes. We can bring, um, data from the previous year, this year to show that the inconsistency or that is consistent with not any change in, in improvement. Um, I would also try to, um, you know, voice my opinion and make sure that my voice is about the urgency of the changes that are needed. And so what's happening, what I see and what I've been hearing in the community, share that with, with the board and say, hey, listen, this seems to be something that, um, it's not necessarily overheard, but maybe we're at a standstill on how to address this. I have some ideas and some suggestions, if you guys would allow me to, um, present them to you, I think we should take a look at them. But I, but I would present it, um, you know, to, to my own improvement or based off what my experience is, my community involvement um, to the board and see if we can create some urgency and some implement some changes that hasn't been done from the last two years or so.
Okay, um, that sounds fantastic. Okay, um, does anybody else wanna participate? You can put it in the chat if you can't unmute. Janine, do you wanna say something?
Um, yeah, um, just to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Reynolds, um, I agree with that. And then one other thing is, um, I know you said community about it, but, um, getting other parents involved, um, because numbers really matter. So, um, community organizing. You know, that definitely will set the tone and really get their attention, um, to make change. I just wanted to add that alone.
Great. And John says he agrees with you. Awesome. So let's go to the next slide and Terry and I are gonna walk you through this. So, why do you think in that scenario, so few community members and families attend meetings? Now, I know Terry will agree with this and I'm sure if you've gone to school board meetings, you see. It's hardly anyone unless there's a big issue going on. So I can think of one time, which is a specific example, there was an, um, a policy being, I live in Red Clay and there was a policy being discussed on transgender. Well, I've, five hours of public comment. I, on both sides of the issue. There, it was a big, big deal and I never saw so many people. And I've been going to school board meetings for 25 years. I've never seen so many people. So when you have an issue like that, and John probably remembers this because he and I were sitting together at that meeting now that I think of it. When you think about that, an issue that the community really cares about brings out people, right? But people should be up in arms about our student outcomes and they don't come out and talk about it. So I think Janine saying, um, about the parents coming out and, and community organizing is really a great way to address this particular question, why so few community members are attending meetings. Terry, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, um, I wanted to also, you know, to a point that you had made earlier when we have, you know, so few members attending meetings. When the meetings, when the board is not working together as a cohesive unit, right? And there's a lot of discord, uh, and the meetings go on and on and on. That's a turnoff for people. They don't want to be out till nine, 10, 11, 12 o'clock because you'll be working, you wanna get up, you got kids, you're trying to get them back and forth to practices. So, um, that's one of the reasons why, if you wanna engage, if you really wanna be intentional with engaging the community, you have to present as a cohesive functioning unit, but you have to also stick to your schedule, stick to your agenda and just be really purposeful about getting through that agenda and handling the business at hand. And like Yvonne said, just being student-driven and student-focused, um, to keep them engaged.
And another way that you can get involved is you can consider running for school board, right? If you don't have a seat at the table, like I said, you don't have a voice. Or if you can't commit to running for school board, there's other ways that you can get closer to having influence over decision-making. And one would be to join a district committee. All commit, all school districts have at least a finance committee, probably a policy committee. They have other committees too. They might have a safety committee or a diversity committee. Or if they're looking at attendance zones or changing feeder patterns, they might have a committee. But it's a really great way to get your foot in the door where you have a seat at the table. And then you're sharing information with the district from the community because you're representing the community. And then the community's voice is heard. So there's lots of ways that you can get involved where you can have your voice heard. We can go to the next slide. Okay. Hold on. This is you and me again, Terry. Um, so how can we hold the school board more accountable? I'd love to hear from you guys how you think that would work.
I think it goes back to the fundamental principle of getting parental involvement in and having parents have a voice and really stress to parents the importance of being heard. And so in, in order to be heard, you have to be heard, if that makes sense. I have to express my voice so that I can be heard and so that my hearing, my, not what I'm just saying is not just drawn was all, but it's actually heard to a sense that there's some change. So, I mean, that's
Yeah. No, that's great. Anything about, what do you think about data and student outcomes? Should they be discussed at meetings? And what kind of data should be shared?
Oh, for me?
For any of you.
So, so I'm gonna use the example of a county I worked in. I talked to you earlier. I won't say the name. Um, absolutely. And so we had an issue, um, with, um, reading proficient levels, okay, with students. And we, we found, and this was a nationwide, I think it was back in, uh, back in two, early 2000, up and around that range where 63% of the students were reading, um, not at fourth, at fourth grade level, proficient level, okay, where the data showed that math and reading scores were so low at particular schools within the district. And I saw, I've noticed that, um, you know, parents didn't really come out to, to express their opinions unless it was directly to their child. So for instance, if my son is, is reading on a level or he's excelling, um, it's okay. But if Johnny, who's having some behavior problems and Sarah who's getting suspended constantly, you know, and their grades are poor, then it's, my voice doesn't speak to them. And I think it should be the other way around where we're all a community and if we know that the school district's proficient score levels are low, everyone is gonna be impacted in some form or fashion. And, and it goes back to getting parents involved. And I gotta tell you, you know, the sports extracurriculum, I'm all for it. And I can tell you now, just from my experience, you know, parents will bring their kids to sports, all type of after-school. But the minute you talk about mentoring and academics, it becomes to the wayside. I don't know about in Delaware, but where I've had some experiences that is overwhelming with athletes. But when, when you start talking about getting students proficient reading scores and after-school enhancement, it seems to dwindle. So what I'm saying is, we need more, if we gotta get extracurricular and coincide it with, um, someone talking about academics and parents getting involved with both. Um, and I'm not saying I have the answer to that. It's just what I've seen.
There's a disconnect is what you're saying.
And what, what we found is those kids who were reading below grade level and math um, had the most behavior problems is because not so much that they were bad kids, but they didn't understand, so didn't act out. So I'll stop there. That's another whole topic.
I think that's a really good correlation. Janine, I know you wanted to say something.
No, I just wanted to, um, say, um, one of the reasons behind that, and I don't know, this might go off a little bit, but I just wanted to mention it. One of the reasons is because if you grow up in a household that is not focused on education, um, then that's not gonna be, um, one of the, you know, um, top priorities, uh, especially when you have so much responsibility, um, on your head uh, with just trying to make it. Um, so a lot of times, uh, it gets missed. Um, whether it's intentionally or not. And so I just wanted to mention that. I know that's kind of a little off, but
No, I think that's a really good point. I think, I think you both make excellent points um, about the level of engagement from sometimes families. And I think also a lot of times families, they grew up in households where their parents didn't get involved, so they, they don't have a role model. Like my kids, I was overly involved to the point where I had to sign a contract not to start a PTA at the college, at University of Delaware or my daughter wouldn't go there because I was the biggest helicopter mom there was, right? For both my kids. And so, and they're both joiners, they're involved in so many things. My son coaches my grandson and everything and they saw that growing up. So I think when families, when people are growing up in families where they're not doing that, they don't have that example. So they don't know that that can make an impact on their student. And so that's why it's so important to embrace family engagement in our school districts. So just out of curiosity, um, a question to think about is where you can get information to make informed decisions. Do you feel that, um, that's a transparent thing? Like you would know where to find those things?
I think a lot of parents may not know, and I think, um, when you don't know, you don't know, you know? And I think a lot of parents may not necessarily know what resources to go through. It's not so much that they don't wanna know, they may not know who to go to and what to look for. Yeah, yeah.
That's a really good point. Janine, did you wanna say something?
Oh, no, I had already answered. I said no.
Yeah, I think that, um, it's important that, I almost think that school districts should have like, um, you know, some kind of webinar at the beginning, this is where you can find everything. I think people tend to not understand what school boards really do, so they don't go to the meeting, so they don't understand the importance of it. They only think about it when there's a problem where they should be engaged in it for everything. Okay, we're gonna go to the next slide. So the, the next slide is just some resources to get more information about what we've talked to, to today. And we're gonna send you this PowerPoint at, at tomorrow morning with a fact sheet, so you have it. But these are just some, um, some things that I found online that I think are really good resources for best practices for school boards and how they function and how they can be effective. This is a great blog post from Effective School Boards. So this is just some, um, further, uh, information. And we're gonna go to the final slide, which is our final poll, which is, do you have a better understanding now of the role of a school board and now a local school board and now?
I didn't wanna say I was an expert, but I do feel pretty good that
Okay, that's fine. That's good. Okay. All right, but at least it's not a no from anyone, which is good. It means that we made some impact. We're measuring our accountability.
Absolutely.
Okay, we can go, um, we're just gonna go through a couple of more slides, a few things, and then we'll take some questions. We have a few minutes. Before we go take questions, can we just go to the next slide? So I just wanna, um, this is First Aid Educates landing page on our website and that you can get a lot of information. We have knowledge hubs, um, we have workshops that Terry and I put together and they're loaded on here. And Bruna is our, um, she's our intern here and she does all of our um, graphics and she creates these fantastic fact sheets and they're on here too. So, um, we would love for you to visit there. Um, if you're interested in running for school board, please make sure you contact me, but I think I've already talked to all of you. And we can go back and now we can stop sharing and I'll take any questions.